Good evening, we are live.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September meeting of the Pitt County Planning Board. I'm Chairman Brad Guth and I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if we could have a roll call, Ms. Auten.
Fred Austin.
Present.
Fay Barefoot.
Present.
Don Brown.
Here.
Naomi Buck.
Here.
David Davenport.
Here.
Brad Guth.
Here.
RJ Henby.
Here.
Steve Little.
Here.
Tucker Moore.
Present.
And Maria Rodgerson.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we received notice that John Landrin would not be able to join us tonight.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Auten. I believe that gives us a good quorum. And thanks, everybody, for being here this evening. Now, you'll join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, if you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes from the August meeting. I hope everybody received those in your packet that Ms. Auten mailed and emailed to us. Do I hear a motion to approve those, or are there any corrections?
Move to approve.
Second, Don Brown.
Mr. Little has moved to approve, and Mr. Brown has seconded that. Ms. Auten, if you could do a roll call vote for us.
Fred Austin.
Approve.
Fay Barefoot.
Approve.
Don Brown.
Approve.
Naomi Buck.
Approve.
David Davenport.
Approve.
Brad Guth.
Approve.
RJ Henby.
Approve.
Steve Little.
Approved.
Tucker Moore.
Approved.
And Maria Rodgerson.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Auten. The minutes of the meeting are approved. If... Do we have any folks that would like to make a public address to the board that aren't speaking on particular items on our agenda this evening, Ms. Auten?
No, sir, not that I have signed up.
Okay. We'll move to the next item, which is administrative matters with our planning director, James Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I don't know if Naomi can activate my screen or not. If not, Jason can pull his up, and I just wanted to give you and actually an update on our planning board membership. So, Jason, if you'll go ahead and activate yours and run through the slides. That way, we won't have to toggle back and forth and hopefully have a little bit more or less issues with any of the displays. So, with that up there, you'll just give me a minute.
All right.
And Jason, if you'll progress to the next slide, please. So, again, we have new members, freshly appointed as of Monday night by the Board of Commissioners. We had two at-large districts. Pretty much, these individuals could come from any part of the county. Charles McGloughorn, also known locally as Sonny McGloughorn. And Mr. Lyman Hardy is back for a repeat performance. Mr. Lyman has been on our board a couple of times before, served as chairman before. We're glad to have him back on. Then we have another member, Madison Downing, that is coming into District C. So, all three of those members will be sworn in at the October meeting, if we have one. And then also, we have election of officers next month also. So, just know that we'll have some more administrative matters to deal with next month. Next slide, please.
It is the next slide.
We've got the next slide up.
And the next slide is just showing those people that are being reappointed. Don Brown's back up for a second term, as well as Mr. Davenport and Mr. Little. So, again, we appreciate your willingness to participate yet another three-year term. And then finally, those that are going off our board, the last slide, please. Tucker Moore, again, served a full term. Maria Rodgerson as well, both going off. You can see those were the two at-large seats that have been filled. And we'll have to give Ms. Fay Barefoot extra recognition because she stayed on an extra year after serving two terms because we could not find a replacement for Ms. Fay. So, again, appreciate everyone's good service over the past term. And welcome any questions or comments you might have about any of these. Again, they become official as of your October meeting.
Well, again, thank you, Tucker, and Maria, and Fay, for your service to the board. We will definitely miss you and your participation at the meetings, but know that your service was appreciated.
Thank you, Brad, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
And we'll look forward to welcoming Mr. McGloughorn, Mr. Hardy, and Mrs. Downing at the October meeting.
Very good. That's all we have for administrative matters, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. We'll move on to the development review. I think Mr. Bryant is going to handle that with Abbott's Trail and consideration of the preliminary plat.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For development review, we have Abbott's Trail Preliminary Plan. This is located on Abbott Farm Road, east of its intersection with NC 903 South, the Aiden Township. It's 16 lots, 26.1 acres. The owner is Fork Swamp Land LLC. This is an overall view of the area. This is further zoomed in. This is an overall view of the plan. And zoomed in here, you'll notice the access are to be named. You'll notice the Southwest Bypass is running there on the right-hand side. They have their open spaces required for their ordinance. And zooming in a little further, these are what are referred to as Hammerhead, or usually temporary turnarounds. These will be paved. They'll be constructed to private street requirements by NC DOT. NC DOT is also going to require a 10-foot non-access easement along the front of these lots, so their access will be granted only from the Hammerhead configuration. This site is zoned RR with a minimum of 25,000 square foot lot size. Forty streets are proposed. Electricity is provided by Greenwood Utilities Commission. Order service provided by Bell Arthur Water Corporation. The conditions and requirement on this plan, erosion plan will be required if more than one acre of land is disturbed. The private street section must be constructed to NC DOT standards and will require private street maintenance agreement. And homeowners association will be required for the maintenance of the private streets. A 40-foot minimum build line must be shown along the right-of-way of Abbott's Farm Road. Street construction and right-of-way must meet the minimum requirements for private streets and subdivision ordinance. No stormwater BMPs are required due to the nutrient loading being below the maximum loading requirements for nitrogen and attenuation calculations not showing more than a 10% increase in peak flow volumes pre and post development. The stormwater permit shall be valid for a period of two years from the day of issuance unless a valid building permit has been issued and maintained for the site or the stormwater permit has been revoked by Pitt County. If after two years the permitted activity has not begun nor a valid permit secured, this permit shall expire. All land purchases and transfers necessary to secure the property for development shall be completed prior to the issuance of this permit. The development of this track shall proceed according to all plans, design, features, and restrictions submitted as part of the stormwater permit application and kept on file by the Pitt County Planning Department, except that the Pitt County Stormwater Administrator may approve minor changes consistent with the approved plan as required by field conditions in accordance with Section 15G of the Pitt County Stormwater Ordinance for Nutrient Control. If any amendments are made to the approved plan, revised stormwater calculations must be submitted to the Pitt County Planning Department. NC DOT has approved this plan. Pitt County Environmental Health will require septic systems to be approved prior to final plat approval. Greenwood Utilities approves this plan. Bell Arthur Water Corporation will supply water to the proposed subdivision. Pitt County Schools and Districts are Aiden Elementary School, Aiden Middle School, Aiden Griffin High School. And Pitt County Emergency Management approves this plan. This is an overall site view looking across the site from Abbott Farm Road. Another view from Abbott Farm Road. This is another view of Abbott Farm Road facing the mist. And a view down Abbott Farm Road showing adjacent property. Technical Review Committee has recommended conditional approval. The adjacent property owners have been notified and staff has received emails and phone calls in regards to proposed development. Comments and questions are those wishing to review the plan and overall design, some wishing to attend the meeting and submit comment. We have a letter submitted by an adjacent property owner. My name is Staran Wood, and I'm an property owner adjacent to the reference proposed subdivision. I wish to submit my comments and questions in this letter, which I hope will help decision-makers make a well-informed decision and educated decision that will ultimately inspire public confidence and trust in the county government. Admittedly, I'm a layperson regarding property development. Like many other particularly taxpayers, I rely on governmental authorities like yourself to make decisions that will protect potential home buyers that most likely do not fully understand what they are purchasing. One of my concerns is the proposed track of lands and ability to drain properly visually looking at my property. I believe I have one of the best, if not the best, draining lots out here. However, I personally experienced standing water on my property an average of 12, six to 12 times per year. Unfortunately, as my neighbors will attest, the lots don't drain nearly as well as mine. The proposed track has an existing system of drainage ditches that farmers have well-maintained, yet certain areas still stay wet a good portion of the year. Also, the Southwest Bypass addition essentially created an eight-foot berm watering a large portion of this track. Since the berm has been in place, I've noticed that the land's ability to drain has clearly deteriorated. Soil type shown on the map appear to have been produced by a soil scientist. However, to my knowledge, a written licensed soil scientist report has not been submitted to the Pitt County Environmental Health Department. One would think this would be essential information for all decision-makers to have prior to any approval of a project. I'm asking the planning board to ask for this information prior to voting on this tract. I've attached a copy of the proposed Abbott Farm subdivision lot layout drawing. Exhibit A, the drawing shows different soils types, A, B, 1, C, and D. I have color-coded the drawing to show the different soil types. However, it is my understanding if the licensed soil scientist's nomenclature matches that of the Environmental Health Department. Exhibit B, 48.1% is usually unsuitable, type D soil to support septic system. 22.9 of its type C soil would be above ground mound criteria soil. Exhibit C. This is an alarming 71% of the total acreage proposed to be developed. As you see by the explanation in the email from Environmental Health, exhibit B, poorly drained soils were very limited. Suitability for dwellings are very limited for septic systems. This will pose very serious drainage and waste management problems that will only worsen over time. The soil type will never change. Building houses and pouring asphalt and concrete will not only add to the existing storm and groundwater issues, but also negatively impact the soil's ability to accept sewage flow. Other impacts, surrounding homeowners like myself could be severely affected by the drainage disruption this project would present, as explained above. Environmental degradation could occur as the septic systems wear out or become overwhelmed. My concern is that the affluent water will find its way to the significant drainage ditch that runs beside my house. This could impact ecosystems, both domestic and wild animals, and finds its way to continue to creep. The proposed land is just a poor choice for development. I've spoken to the farmer previously that tended this land for years. He stated that this land is naturally wet. Potential home buyers would not be privy to the information provided in this letter. All too often, don't understand and subsequently don't realize these issues until it's too late. A good example of this is shown in exhibit C. As taxpayers and voters, we look to the county decision-makers to serve an important advocacy capacity in meeting the needs of their citizens and should strive to inspire public confidence. A vote in favor of this would send the opposite message that pretty much anything goes. Also, future homeowners could be subject to unattractive mound systems, exhibit C. All the extra sewage water would add to the already challenged storm and groundwater issues created by so much concrete, asphalt, roofs, outbuildings, and the additional addition of the Southwest Bypass. A vote to pass this project will result in angry homeowners that will live in an area where poor soils that shrink and swell cause degradation of driveways, septic systems, and foundations of their homes. In addition, there will be areas for their children and pets to play safe, comfortable environment. Not to mention, it will only take one night, their first night in their new home, to realize how high volume of noise pollution that the bypass produces. Those new homeowners in lots 6 through 16 will be affected most. I used a digital sound meter and took sound level readings approximately 600 foot from the bypass. I found passenger vehicles yielded about 60 decibels while 18-wheel trucks can yield up to 75. While taking these readings, an 18-wheeler truck veered slightly off the road and hit the warning strips and yielded 80 decibels. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency recommends residential noise level range between 45 and 55 decibels. My question regarding the proposed development. My questions regarding the proposed developments are as follows. There is an existing groundwater lowering ditches that help with draining this track. Will these ditches, will they be modified, or will drainage tile be installed? Who will maintain these ditches before and after homeowners move in? There is an existing ditch that severs lots 1 through 7 that divides the front yard from the back. Will the homeowners have to build a bridge across to gain access to the backyard? Please paint a picture of how this will work. How many of the lots have the mound of septic systems? The existing, the surrounding area are custom-built crawl space. Will the wells be in keeping with this? Will there be covenants governing the proposed subdivision? If so, have they been developed and are they available to the public? Who was the soil scientist used on this project and what were the recommendations? In closing, the board's recommendation advised housing development and parcel 0 to 0 has been proper for farmers that tend to these sites for over centuries. In return, these same farmers have been good stewards of the coveted grounds. Speaking for all the existing neighbors that were in this area, we are asking the decision makers to be good stewards of this land by voting against this development. Don't allow family, social, or other relationships to influence your judgment or lend prestige to your office to advance the proud financial gains of one or two individuals. Sincerely, Staran Wood. And with that, do we have any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Are there any questions from the board?
Sounds like there should be a lot of questions, I'm assuming, based on what Mr. Wood has stated here. And I'm just curious, James, when we look at this, have we had a chance to look back at some of his questions and be able to respond to what's going on here?
Mr. Little, I have shared this letter with Mr. Palavoda, who is the engineer that's working on this project. If you'd like, could help answer some of those questions.
Good evening, Board. My name is Igor Palavoda. I work as an engineer at Baldwin Design Consultants. I worked on this preliminary plat, and I can answer some of Mr. Wood's questions. Question number 1A, will these ditches remain open?
Can I interrupt your statement?
Sure, yeah.
Is this my system? Is there a sound? Are we having a sound issue?
I do hear some feedback. Well, not right now, but I just did a few minutes ago.
And I'm on mute. Just say that ahead.
Sounds like a dog barking.
Well, I don't have a dog in the office here, huh?
You can go ahead.
Okay. Question number 1A, will these ditches remain? Yes, the ditches will remain. Question 1B, will they be modified, or will drainage tile be installed? No. Question 1C, who will maintain these ditches before or after homeowners move in? The developer will be maintaining them prior to selling the lots. After the lots are sold, homeowners and HOA would be responsible for maintenance. Number 2, let's see. The ditch that severs lots 1 and 7, will the owner have to build a bridge across it to gain access to the backyard? The owner does not necessarily need to build a bridge. He can just put in 20 feet of pipe and cross it that way if he desires to. Question number 3. How many of the developed lots, if any, will have to be mound-type septic systems? Just lot 1 will have a mound-type septic system as the primary system. Number 4, the existing homes in the immediate surroundings areas are custom-built. Homes on a crawl space, will the proposed houses be in keeping with this? I talked to the developer, and he does not know the answer to that. His plan is to, right now, is to get preliminary plat approved and then sell the lots to the builders. As the builders come to him, he does not know what homes will be built. And he cannot know at this point, basically. Number 5, will there be a covenant governing the proposed subdivisions? If so, have they been developed? Are they available to the public? The covenants are actually required to maintain the private streets. So, yes, they will be prepared. They have not been prepared yet, but they do need to be prepared before the final plat is approved and recorded, basically. And once recorded, they are available to the public. They can view it at the Register of Deeds or on OPIS. Who was the soil scientist used on this project, and what are their credentials? Gene Aston was Aston Soil Works, was the soil scientist used on this project, and he is a licensed soil scientist. And I believe that answers all of Mr. Wood's questions.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll also pipe in for, since Mr. Little also referred to me. Yes, we've had some dialogue and correspondence with Mr. Wood, not specifically about the letter, since the letter just came in late yesterday. But we have had discussions, especially about the septic systems. As you realize, at the preliminary plat stage, it is not a requirement that any of the lots be evaluated. It's simply, you're looking at the requirements for our subdivision ordinance as far as lot dimensions, lot sizes, access, those preliminary type review items. Certainly, now that we have some proposed public roads or private roads, I should say, going in, that also affords another review period at the construction plan phase. That is handled by the Technical Review Committee, though, not the planning board. So, just know, there may be, with the amount of impervious surfaces going in with those private roads that has triggered in stormwater, soil erosion, sedimentation control, and the construction plan phase. So, there will be other opportunities for review where more technical information, especially about the drainage, especially about the soil types, where that will be considered. And certainly, again, that information is not necessarily required at the preliminary plat stage.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Are there any other questions for the board, or did that... Mr. Little, did that help with any questions that you had?
It does, and I appreciate the response that James just gave me. But yet still, I guess I'm questioning in my mind, too, septic systems. And you're right, I'm sure that'll be handled at the next level. I just hate to see it down the road. If something got approved, we just send it on.
I believe that Environmental Health will look at that again during the construction plan phase. Am I correct on that, Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, sir. And in fact, what is required, our office communicates at the time the construction plan comes in for review. We communicate with Environmental Health, and it's a requirement that all the lots have an improvement permit approved by Environmental Health at that point. And what that improvement permit pretty much tells anyone that's buying the property or is involved with the development, the improvement permit advises them what type of system has been approved for wastewater management on each lot. So, that's a requirement at the construction plan submittal phase, and that's when we can tell for sure, is it a mound system? Is it a regular-type septic system or some other?
And what happens at that point if it's required and they are not providing that?
That is grounds for disapproval. We do not move forward with the construction plan review process unless the lots have received some approval through Environmental Health. That is a requirement.
And that's the Technical Review Committee that does that?
That is correct. It starts, the plan is submitted through our office, so Jason and Thomas would be involved with distributing that to the review agencies. And in turn, Environmental Health also submits back to us the details about each lot as to whether they've been approved for wastewater, on-site wastewater systems.
Thank you.
And at that point, James, do we hear, again, from after, if they come back and say that it's been disapproved, do we get that information back also, or is this board?
Not typically, but if you're interested in receiving that, maybe part of your monthly report or something, we could certainly add that in. Typically, the preliminary plats move on through the review process. And I can't tell you that there's many that don't. If they've invested time and effort in the preliminary plat phase, they're going to meet those conditions and requirements most often and move on through the review process.
So, what you've just said, Danny, if they've already approved in this part of the process, it's basically moving forward, right?
Again, Environmental Health has not, to my knowledge, and I checked with them when I was corresponding with Mr. Wood earlier, probably two or three weeks ago, they had not received the detailed soils information. But it does look like some work has been done out on site based by on some of the maps that we've seen. We've just not received the full report. That will have to be submitted to Environmental Health and has to ensure that each lot can stand on its own for septic system. stand on its own for septic system.
Mr. Chairman, this is Igor Palavoda. I actually do have the septic systems designed. I marked them up on a plan we just haven't drawn up in AutoCAD yet, basically, because we were waiting. If there's a chance of a preliminary plat being denied, it makes no sense for us, you know, to put the cart in front of the horse, so to speak, and waste our clients' time and money. But we do have the systems designed and he's ready to pay the fees for the improvement permits and submit the septic plan for review as soon as preliminary plat is approved, basically.
Thank you.
And that's how I know that there's one primary septic system required. It's going to be on lot one. The remaining ones are all conventional.
Yeah, as per your information, and then the environmental health folks will review that and approve that if that's to their standards.
And if they disagree with some of the soil calls, the worst thing can happen is you lose a lot of to us, so.
Understood. Are there any other questions from the board? Mr. Little, is that satisfying to you? Are there any concerns you have?
Well, no doubt.
Okay.
This one is a concern, so.
Understood, understood. Are there any other public comments that need to be made? Do we need to open any to public addresses? Ms. Auton, do we have folks that signed up?
Mr. Wood.
And let me know how we did that, since his letter has already been read into the Does he still have the three minutes? Is that correct?
Is that correct, James?
He has three minutes unless he's speaking for a group, and that could go up to five minutes then.
Understood. Okay, Mr. Wood? All right. You have the floor, Mr. Wood.
I am speaking for my neighbors, and I've got a lot of backwash on my end. I don't know if the rest of you do or not, but I'm having a little hard time hearing, especially Mr. Little, what he had to say. Can you hear me all right?
I can.
Okay. Jason, can you get my three exhibits up first, please? Okay. I want to make sure that the color-coded plat that you just saw gets the consideration it deserves. Type C and D soil simply should not be expected to support multiple septic systems. And these two soil types add up to 71% of the total acreage proposed to be developed. That was 71%. And if it's not good for below-grade septic systems, it's certainly not good for residential structures. The report that the technical review committee received from Pitt County Soil and Water concerning soils was most likely derived from the Pitt County Soil Survey. This survey states that the fieldwork of the soil survey was done in the period from 1964 to 1967. So it's 56 years old. In talking with a local soil scientist, he explained that the survey is widely inaccurate. It's believable that the science of soils today is much more accurate. Therefore, I'm asking this board to delay voting on this proposal and ask for the soil report, who the soil scientist is, which has been answered, and what their credentials are. I believe it is your duty, although it may not be required, to review all available information pertinent to this proposed development. One of my county commissioners is Mr. Tom Colson. I invited him and he accepted my invitation to come to my house to observe the land and the color-coded soils map. He ultimately stated that until such time as municipal sewer is available, this development should not be attempted. I am not a soil scientist, but common sense is enough to understand that this proposal is a bad idea and will put both private property owners and public entities such as Pitt County in the hole, even if the developer makes a lot of money from the endeavor and is able to wash their hands of future responsibility for the situations that will be created. Don't disregard the facts or ignore principles that your ordinance implies. It would seem almost negligent if this planning board does not look into the soil and drainage issues presented and review the findings that I believe are on record, even if it's not required. And at the very minimum, the reviewers of this proposal ought to obtain some independent and fully disclosed findings about soil and drainage issues. And finally, to the planning board, don't let someone's desire for short-term gains allow ill-advised development to occur in poorly suited areas, because the legacy of those involved is that they allowed it to happen. Many will suffer, few will benefit. I'll provide a copy of this for the minutes. That's it.
That's it.
Thank you for that reminder for me to unmute. Just, are there any questions from the board for Mr. Wood? All right, I have a question for Mr. Rhodes or staff, if you choose to answer it, in terms of what is the requirements that our subdivision regulations have in it regarding soil types? Can you all elaborate on that in terms of that process of decision-making?
I will, Mr. Chair. The soils, of course, especially what Mr. Wood has shown on the maps, those are primarily used by environmental health for any type of approval process, especially if Igor is laying out those design plans for the septic systems. They're going to take those soil types into account, and they're also going to visit the site and ensure that those soil types correspond where they think they should on the map. So, all said, since the septic system approvals aren't required until the construction plan phase, that information isn't required at your preliminary plat consideration. We sometimes have it, and if we have that information, we certainly share it. But at this point, for this particular plan, number one, it's not required, and number two, we don't have that in hand currently.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hembry.
Same concern. I just, I returned from a training just yesterday, and these are some of the same questions that was raised in our legislative discussion. And that is that we need to have current law. And when the young man said that was, how many years ago, that the data that he was presenting to us, then we should have current information if we're going to make some type of decisions, like even if it's not considered, we still need to have current law.
I believe the soil science was completed between '64 and '67, Mr. Rhodes, is that?
Yeah, I don't have those exact dates, Mr. Chairman, but the soil survey for Pitt County is somewhat dated. Typically, those soil types, and it's not, never has been known to be very, very specific, getting down to a lot size type of delineation. So those are very general soil types. Sometimes, especially given the technology 50-some years ago, it may not be as exact as it could be today, but for the most part, that's the best available public data that's readily available. And we look at that not only, you know, just for septic system issues, but for other issues as well, whether it be drainage, whether it be some other things. And certainly, our soil and water office that provides that information in that review also looks at the site to see if there's any subsurface drain tile, which of course also plays into the design and location of any of your septic system fields. So again, some of the dated data, yes, but those soils typically do not change. The technology might be a little bit dated, but for the most part, it is some relative data that we can use in our first preliminary plat review process.
Thank you. Any other feedback? Ms. Auton, do we have anybody else signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'll entertain a motion from the board, Ben, on the staff's recommendation for conditional approval of this preliminary plat based on our subdivision ordinance. Do I hear any motions?
Realize that it's not required, but pending, I think, further information, pending what we got going on here, I'd like to move that we disapprove this project if you have further information.
All right, there's a motion to.
Don Brown.
Disapprove, and Mr. Brown seconded that? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
All right. Ms. Auton, if we can do a roll call vote on Mr. Little's, Mr. Little's motion and Mr. Brown's second to disapprove the approval of this preliminary plat.
And Mr. Chairman, this is James. Just for clarification, if we're seeking additional information from staff's perspective and for any, if this motion goes through, I think it would behoove us, especially the planning board, to go on record as to what information, what is deficient here, so we can better explain it to the developer and his agent, and that being Igor who's on the line tonight.
Understood. Do we need to do that prior to the vote or depending on the vote outcome?
Yes, you can do it after the vote, but I just want to make sure that we're well aware of what deficiencies, what things that you're seeking to provide for your further review if it's brought back in the future.
Understood. All right, Ms. Auton, could you do a roll call vote for the board, please?
Fred Austin.
I disapprove of the motion.
Faye Barefoot.
Disapprove.
Don Brown.
Disapprove.
Naomi Buck.
Approve it.
You approve it?
Yes, I approve it.
Mr. Chair, we might need clarification.
Let's clarify the, yes, sir, let's clarify the motion on the table is to disapprove of the preliminary plat. So if you approve of disapproving of the plat, you vote in the affirmative. And if you are voting against and you'd like to see the preliminary plat approved, you have to vote no. Is that correct?
That would be my understanding of the motion.
Yes.
And the appropriate way to vote, Mr. Chairman. Just for that being slightly unclear, I would recommend that we start over the roll call.
Okay.
So we're going to start the roll call again, Ms. Auton?
Okay, Fred Austin.
I disapprove of the disapproval.
Faye Barefoot.
Disapprove.
Don Brown.
Disapprove.
Naomi Buck.
Disapprove.
David Davenport.
Disapprove.
Brad Goose. Brad Goose.
I disapprove of the motion.
RJ Hembry.
Confused. Okay, I am supporting the motion as not to approve request.
Okay. Steve Little.
Me too, I think, yes.
Tucker Moore.
Disapprove.
Maria Rogerson.
Approve.
Okay. That's everyone.
What did the final outcome of the?
Yeah, what do we say?
Nine to one to disapprove.
Does that sound right to everybody?
Yes.
I thought more people, I thought more people approved it.
Yeah.
You responded disapprove.
Right.
Okay, I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, again, let's be very clear when we go through this and get the motion. We know what the motion is, and that the motion on the table is to disapprove the plan. So we just need a yes or a no, whether that to happen or not. That's going to be the simplest way, in my opinion. So going back to Mr. Hembry's question about being confused, so if you want to disapprove the plan, you would say yes. If you're okay with moving forward with the plan, you would say no. So Tab, go one more time.
Fred Austin.
No.
Faye Barefoot.
Yes.
Don Brown. Naomi Buck.
Yes, approve.
David Davenport.
No.
Brad Goose.
No.
RJ Hembry.
Yes.
Steve Little.
Yes.
Tucker Moore.
No.
Maria Rogerson.
Yes.
Okay, one, two, three, six.
It is a mixed-up match.
Six yes and four no.
The plan, preliminary plan has been denied, correct?
Correct.
Thank you for that. Sorry it was so confusing. Mr. Rhodes, do we need to talk now about the specifics of what we want to go back?
I would like to, yes, I would like to know what items, as we're conferring with the project engineer and the developer, what is missing. Again, we did a thorough review. We've got all the information that's required through the subdivision ordinance and our checklist. So what additional information would be needed at this point?
Anyone from the board care to share your insight?
Well, this is David Davenport. I'd like to hear from those that voted to disapprove. What do you want to see?
And that's what I'd like to state right now, if I may. And I'm going by the further information that came in this letter from Mr. Wood, but at the same time, thinking about future homeowners to make sure that they are aware of the property that they're going to be purchasing, whether it's because of drainage, and I guess, does that come under Pitt County Health Environmental? If that be the case, or septic systems? Just, is it appropriate what we're talking about here? I don't want somebody to be, in fact, in one of the pictures that you showed, as you showed the plot itself, I noticed there was not much water standing in those fields right now. Again, may not have anything to do with anything, but there's just, I think, a lot of questions that are still concerning this plat.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Are there any other? Yes, Mr. Austin?
Yes, I'd like to address the board that the fact that up to this point, the subdivision ordinance requirements have been met, in my opinion, it does. It does require further scrutiny to see if it can proceed any further. I also agree with the fact that it's a mess. It's, it's an odd request to be made, but up to this point, the ordinance has been met. And we, we need to depend upon the technical staff to carry through with their actions and responsibilities.
Thank you, Mr. Austin.
I agree, Mr. Austin, and I appreciate your points. And I guess my concern is again, right now, James, I appreciate what you and your staff do, but at the same time, just trying to be sure that on the planning board, that before we start passing something up, that we've tried to do our just diligence, okay? And maybe, maybe we have, and that's all we're supposed to do. I'm just concerned that in this particular issue, on this particular plat, all the questions, there's too many questions still unanswered. And I'll be happy to call you tomorrow when we talk to, talk about it.
Mr. Brown or Mr. Hemby?
Mr. Brown. My concern is, is the water problem. I purchased some property myself and got a little wink on the same type of situation, and it would cost me too much to fix the problem. So I end up doing something else with the property. That's, that's my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Rhodes, is that something to start with?
As long as my assistant county attorney also agrees that he can assist with writing this disapproval letter, I am okay. But I'm still, you know, if the developer and Igor's on the line still, I'd like to be a little bit more specific if we could. What, what information is needed? It sounds to me like the board is requesting the soils information that we typically get at the construction plan phase. You want that upfront and determine whether the, the septic systems are going, going to be approved for each lot. And that's just out of the typical process that we go through. And I guess that's a question to Igor and to the developer, whether they want to invest that time and effort into moving forward and still unsure about any approvals at that point. So any additional comments from any of those that voted in favor of disapproval would be welcomed at this point.
James, did I misunderstand just a moment ago that Igor said that he already had a septic plan for each one of those lots?
I, I, I have it marked up in pen on a, on a septic layout. I emailed it to Jason Bryant earlier today. I'm not sure if he could share it right now, basically. Do you have it, Jason, by any chance? Just to, to get them an idea of the system locations.
I'm just saying that gives you something to work with.
Give me one second and let me get it pulled up here.
And like I was saying earlier, like we, we currently showing 16 lots. So let's say environmental health goes out there and disagrees with soil scientist calls. So we'd end up losing a lot here or there. It's, but not the whole subdivision, you know? It's So, so you can see on, on here, basically, we are assuming 60 by 60 house envelopes and I basically laid out the septic systems where they need to go. For example, you see like a system in lot 11, for example, saying primary five at 80, so that's five drain lines at 80 feet long. And then the repair area for it behind it. So all, all this has been laid out. It's just not in CAD yet.
And Igor, was the soil technically evaluated?
It was evaluated by Genasten. If you go to the right of the, of this, of this markup there in the top, go, go up a little bit there, the legend over here. It, it tells you the, you know, the L T R, the long-term acceptance rates. Over here where it says soils legend. And based on those numbers, that's how I'm coming up with the particular areas for each septic system that would be required. And actually, I, for these systems, I use the lower number, point three and standard point four, for example, so I do have some caution in the design in there.
I have a question for the engineer.
Yes, or Mr. Austin?
Thank you. Um, so, so looking at your drawings and I appreciate you submitting this. You know, looking at the, the lots, where's the footprint for a house on some of these lots?
It's the
You certainly don't want to put it on the soil type D.
No, I'm not playing, I mean, over here, like you see where the painting, painting represents, for example, lot seven, the paint that represents the driveway and right behind it, that's the house envelope. 60 by 60 footprint. I think I have it labeled elsewhere. Can you go to lot number 10, Jason? And scroll down, it, it has a label there for the footprint, basically. Some more, go down some more. Oh, there you go. There's over here, it says 60 by 60 house envelope. It, it points to the square, the 60 by 60 square, basically. It's, the house would be right behind the 30 foot MBL, behind that private access. Private ex, private street, basically. And we are, I'm also showing you water meters, basically, water services going from from the right of a line towards the house footprint. So all this basically kind of tells you where the houses need to be, where the driveways need to be and where the septic systems need to be.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll just, again, to get further direction by the board, if Igor or his staff are able to, able and willing, again, not a requirement at the preliminary plat stage, but if they're willing to provide this type of information back to the board, is this what the board is looking for? Or there's still other data sets, information that might need to be brought forward?
This is Maria Rogerson. I had a question. Is this just his preliminary layouts or have these been perked in these areas? And the recommendations from the health department been provided? Or is that what you're talking about would happen later on with the subdivision construction plans?
These areas, they were perked by the private soil scientists, Genasten, and the layout is based off of soil scientist data. So once we pay the 6, 6,400 view to Pitt County Health Department, they're going to come out there and verify soil scientist work, basically. And if they disagree on some of these calls, we would have to adjust these septic areas.
So is there any issue providing that? Is there any issue providing that data to the board that the soil scientists has already collected? That would be recommended to the health department?
It's already shown on the plat where it showed the long-term acceptance rates, basically, to the right.
Okay.
And health department, they would basically get this map and, and those engines, long-term acceptance rates, basically mapped out on, already on this map.
And they would be required at the construction phase to have the soils evaluated by environmental health. As we've already said, it's, it's not required at the preliminary plat stage, but once they have a conditional approval, then they apply for their septic permits and submit a construction plan, and that would go back to the TRC. And then the TRC reviewing the construction plan, they would approve or conditionally approve and require that all conditions are met before they can have an approved construction plan. And then at that phase, environmental health would confirm everything. And they, their evaluation would be standalone. So they will go out on site and as they confirm, they will pull their own bores and sample the soil themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. At this point, since the plat has been, preliminary plat has been denied, what is the process for the developer to go through, go to now? What, what happens now?
That's what I was trying to figure out as far as any additional information, if they wish to resubmit. At this point, if it's been disapproved, what will be required? It will be a new submittal. And it may be very similar to what you've already seen, but it may have additional data with it. And so the next phase or next step, in my opinion, would be that they would re, need to resubmit a preliminary plat submittal package along with additional information, in this case soils information, for further consideration by the planning board at an upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Can that happen at the next meeting and what are the costs involved with that?
We need to call, you can get in it, you can ask.
I, I doubt it would make it at the next meeting unless Igor's has this information just ready to submit to our office tomorrow. I'd have to look at the submittal schedule. I know we've got five weeks between this meeting and the next, so he may be able, he might have an extra few days, but he would need to submit the package and would have to bring in new review fees because we're starting a, a new review process, a new plan with additional information. We would route it back out to our review agencies and ensure that you get the comments back. And there may be some others, especially from environmental health, if they see the soils data that they've not been shared with so far.
But typically, they would not review that aspect of it until the preliminary plat is approved, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, I think we need to move to the next item on the agenda.
Can I, I'm still unclear what, what we're supposed to resubmit. So basically you want these septic fields to be shown on the preliminary plat, correct? That, that's it?
I believe what the, yep, Mr. Moore, I see your hand, just to
Can we go back and just do a straight up and down recommendation of an approval or disapproval?
We don't have that.
To the board on this plat?
Well, sir, Mr. Chairman, I order, we will pass that.
Just a minute, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Hemby? Just a moment. I mean, I think we've already voted
Yes.
Up or down?
All right.
It's, and it's down.
Okay.
And now, now I'm trying to determine what the next steps are for Mr. Pavoda in terms of submitting it for the additional information that I think some of the other board members would like to see to assuage any concerns that they have, that the process be as complete and legitimate as, as, as possible. Typically, again, as, as we've said multiple times, you know, the, the information that we're, seem to be asking for now would be in the next step of the process, and it would all be reviewed. But I believe that some of us want the information before the next step so that we can move forward with the, with our decision. But again, the, the, we voted it down. So we need to determine from this Pavoda, how he needs to move forward.
Can I make a comment? This is Maria.
Yes, Maria, thank you.
Um, I know it's kind of, we're going around in a circle a little bit, but I do want to address the fact that, you know, when the plats are submitted, they're meeting the minimum criteria. And sometimes because of the address of the public and concerns from the public who we represent, we have to ask more questions because sometimes a preliminary plat just can't meet the minimum requirements. Sometimes you have to go above and beyond to get people comfortable with the fact that they're going to approve something. We may not be able to put our finger on, but the adjacent property owners did address some things that when the responses come back, they're just minimum responses. They're the standard answers that we normally get. And sometimes the standard isn't sufficient. So I feel like that's the concern, at least from my perspective, is the issue with this subdivision. It's not the first time that it's come up. We've had this subdivision in front of us before. They've pulled it down. We've, we've had concerns with it. And I just feel like meeting the minimums per the requirements are just not going to be sufficient with this subdivision for people to feel comfortable to approve it and go beyond our control into other technical groups, which I'm not saying they don't have the ability, but they also have their hands tied where their policies only allow them to approve minimum requirements also. And sometimes, like I said, some things need to go above and beyond the minimum for them to work in a certain area. And that's pretty much all I needed to, so wanted to say.
Thank you, Maria, I appreciate that. I, I, I'd like Mr. Smith, Jordan Smith, to, to step in here and, and, and talk about that for one second. Because I think while I agree with the sentiment of Maria's comments, if, if we don't have it in a requirement, it's tough for us as a board to decide and not be arbitrary in our decision-making. And we're just basing our decisions on the information on the subdivision regulations and not anything above or beyond that. Mr. Smith, could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll try to elaborate, but given the juncture, I need to be a little bit circumspect in, in what I do say, given that the board has denied this. Obviously, a developer has certain legal remedies that may be available to them. And so I, I don't want to say too much, but generally, generally, the subdivision order lays out the requirements for the preliminary plat. And if it meets those requirements, then it should be approved by this board. I don't know if that's helpful or not. I, I, I I struggle to say much more than that at this time.
Thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll move on to the next agenda items and let this rest for a little bit since it has been voted on and denied and move forward at, at a later, at a later date. Unless there's any other input that staff or the legal want to provide.
Not right now, Mr. Chairman. This might be an item for further discussion and not just specifically about this development plan, but others in the future. So certainly our assistant county manager, I mean, county attorney has provided information about our administrative duties. uh, certainly, our assistant county manager, I mean, county attorney has provided information about our administrative duties and those, uh, how those are carried out. So, uh, in the future, we might need to have a little bit more, uh, detail, if you want to call it that, uh, in our subdivision ordinance to make sure we're giving you the information that you would want to see when a preliminary plat comes through. That will be for a future meeting. Thank you, sir. So with the information items tonight, Mr. Chair, just a few things. Uh, since it's 2020, I think we alluded to that at the last meeting. Numbers aren't quite what we expected. There's, uh, I think Tab included in your package, uh, an editorial or, uh, article about, uh, the slow growth of Pitt County over the last 10 years. And we're still kind of sorting through numbers, and this leads into the next item, the redistricting of commissioner voter districts. The public law data that is used for that process has been released as well. We're using that to restructure, redefine our voter districts. Remember, the Constitution of the United States requires basically, one person, one vote, and that equates to trying to achieve a target number of people per voter district. They need to be very similar in size, uh, and therefore, people, the same numbers of people are electing a particular representative for that district. So it's very, it's more fair and equitable that way. We're in the process. We provided to the Board of Commissioners a draft plan on Monday night. We met with several commissioners today. And we're hopeful that we will have a plan that goes to a public hearing, uh, September the 27th. Will be our first opportunity for the public to, uh, reflect on the plan. And then a second public hearing on October the 18th. So just know we'll be preparing a webpage for people to go and view the plans and get a better feel for whether they are affected by any of the boundary changes. And just as an example, the area north of the river declined in population. So more or larger geographic areas have to be absorbed into that particular district to make it fair relative to the other districts in the county. And remember, we do have six voter districts in the county. Um, lease program for buyout, uh, properties, you may be familiar. The county owns about almost 300 acres of buyout program, uh, property from various, uh, buyout programs since Hurricane Floyd and now Matthew and a couple of others. And we routinely allow folks to come in to enter into a 10-year lease, $1 a year for some of these properties. And they can use that open space for gardens, uh, other recreational-type activities, as long as no impervious surfaces go in there. We did also enter into a G, uh, an encroachment agreement with Greenview Utilities. And this is actually part of our district plan, our district park plan, where we hope to extend a walking trail over to a nearby subdivision to link it to Wintergreen Elementary as well as to the district park through a crosswalk across County Home Road. Uh, the commissioners also dealt with a sandmine, um, last month and approved it. It's actually an expansion to one, uh, on Avon Road. Uh, next slide, please. And other information in our departmental monthly report, some other correspondence was also included. And if you want to see some of our ordinances, we talked a lot about the subdivision ordinance tonight. Different plans such as our North Carroll NC 43 South Land Use Plan. All they, all that information can be viewed and accessed on our Pitt County website. So please, anyone that's viewing tonight, hopefully they know that site. If not, it's listed at the bottom of the screen. So that's what we have tonight, unless anybody has any questions about those informational items. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Thank you, uh, planning staff, and, uh, thank you, planning board, for all of your discussion this evening. And, uh, thank you to Maria and Tucker, uh, who won't be back next month. Ms. Fay, you've served us very well and appreciate your longevity on the, on the board, and um, we'll see you around in the community, I'm sure. And, uh, unless there's any other, um, comments or questions, I'll listen to a motion to adjourn.
Totally.
All right. I believe we had a voice acclamation to adjourn. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thanks for your service.